Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay, we are on the record. Thank you, Mel. Good morning. It is Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I am calling the Park County Board of County Commissioner meeting to order. It is nine thirty a.m. First, for all of you who are so inclined, please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our Father and our Creator, we ask you to join us this great winter day on this wonderful new beginning. We turn the page on the old; we look forward to the future. We ask you to be with our workers, our citizens, all of us in this room, all of us on this call, and for all of those affected by the ravaging fires around this country. We ask for your blessing as you go forward. In your name we ask, amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Whistle. At this point, we are going to declare sindai, and that means the, um, the end of the past Board of County Commissioners. At this point, we are going to swear in two county commissioners who were elected in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, Mel, Clerk Castle is going to be swearing, um, Jason and I both in, and we'll go down to the podium so we can use the microphone there. Jason, why don't you go first?
Sure, I'll stand out this way.
Make sure that, make sure the light is on on the microphone and you guys speak loudly into it.
Raise your right hand. I, Amy Mitchell, do.
I, Jason Gimmer, do.
Swear by the ever-living God.
Swear by the ever-living God.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado. And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of Park County Commissioner, District Two.
Of the office of Park County District Commissioner, District Two.
On which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Upon which I'm about to enter to the best of my ability.
Sign him. Raise your right hand. I, Amy Mitchell, do.
I, Amy Mitchell, do.
Swear by the ever-living God.
Swear by the ever-living God.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the constitutional laws of the State of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of Park County Commissioner, District One.
Of the office of Park County Commissioner, District One.
Upon which I'm about to enter to the best of my ability.
Upon which I'm about to enter to the best of my ability. Sign and print. And then I'm going to record these, um, seal them, record them, and then... All right. Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate you being zoomed in. May admit a few more people onto Zoom and to be here in the room. I'm going to reconvene our meeting. Um, at this point, um, we're going to take a fifteen-minute break for everybody to congratulate our new Park County Commissioner, District Two, Jason. Um, and I believe there are refreshments out in the foyer here. Um, and we will reconvene at, um, nine forty, nine forty-five-ish and continue our meeting. So thank you very much, everybody in Zoom. We will be back. I'm just going to mute, mute, mute the room meantime. Good morning, everybody. It's not working, is it?
Check one, two, check one, two. I can hear that.
Test, test. Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear it? Testing, one, two, three. Well, it's showing up here, but it's not in the room. But it wasn't very loud before either. So... Testing, one, two, three. I think it has to do with the room. Testing, one, two, three. Thank you. Wow. Sugar and the dais. Testing, one, two, three. You can, but the room changed. How long does that take? Um, everybody on Zoom, we are going to reboot our system because, um, the room audio is not working. So just stay on the Zoom call. We will be back in just a minute. Thank you. All right, everybody. Um, our inside audio is not working. So we are going to resume our meeting, and I'm going to just use Amy's outside voice to run the rest of the meeting. How's that? So we will use outside voices today. Um, if you guys can hear us on Zoom, somebody just please raise their hand. Excellent. So it looks like Zoom is operational. Thank you very much, guys. I didn't turn it off, so we're on the record. Thank you. Testing. Thank you, Clerk Castle. Um, at this point, we are going to reconvene our meeting and, um, approval of agenda and consent items, or approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move the agenda as presented for approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, we have two items on the consent agenda, approval of minutes and approval of vouchers.
Yes, Madam Chair, if you will. Uh, I will move for approval of the consent agenda for those two items as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, now, we are going to have just some consideration and discussion about our two thousand and twenty-five, um, goals and, um, what we are going to be doing as three commissioners. Um, because of open records and sunshine law, um, we can have these conversations in the public area, but we can't, um, talk about a lot of these issues in private. So first thing is just, let's bring out some of the goals we have for two thousand and twenty-five for our board and for the county government. Who would like to start? Commissioner Whistle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I look forward because elections are about looking forward. So we want to welcome Commissioner Gimmer, and stop saying Commissioner-elect Gimmer, um, to the fray. And once they have your signature, you're on board. So there's, uh, you're signed up for four years, Commissioner. And I, at this time, I'd like to, uh, like to also thank Commissioner Elsner, um, for his eight years. Um, it's not easy to do any of these jobs, let alone for two terms, as commissioners are term limited. And, uh, with that, I, I just want to remind everyone, once you've served in that office or any office, you don't lose the title. So Commissioner Elsner will continue to be Commissioner Elsner if he so chooses, as we have Commissioner, um, Walker in our midst, Commissioner Lillian Whistle in our midst. And, uh, they never lose the title once you've served. So I want to, I want to commend that, uh, for that. Um, I think the, the main purpose that I've always been here while I ran in two thousand and twenty-two was trying to make this organization better. Now, that means different things to different people. But for me, being, um, a long-term, um, observer of the functionality of this government, both from an elected and non-elected position, I revere the fact that on my first year, I tried to take things as slow as possible in a very fast lane to really look at this position from a, it with a purpose of, of earning my, earning my stripes or paying my dues. And I think one of the things that Commissioner Gimmer will learn is that what we think we may know may be true, but yet it may not be true. And so that taking that year to really analyze things, not from what I saw before, but what I'm seeing from this perspective today. And it is a different view. I will tell you, my, my, uh, my, uh, where I started in, in, uh, this time two years ago and where we are today is by far different. And I think that journey will be similar for you. I know Commissioner Mitchell has, uh, full term, and she'll have some comments to say, but I think really we're trying to set and establish a foundation for the future. We have the opportunity to look at us as a board and how we work together, and I think that will be a good relationship and a smooth relationship. Agreement does not mean we won't disagree. We will. But I think we can disagree in a way that is productive and constructive and not destructive. And I look forward to that opportunity, uh, going forward, and I believe that will be the case. I think we have a lot of challenges in front of us. Certainly, our budget is the number one challenge and the fact that we are on an unsustainable path of utilizing our reserves greater than our income. And that is just not something we can continue to do. And so my focus has always been, I will always say, minding the store because somebody has to mind the store and keep their eye on what our goes into and goes out is, because that's all we exist for or on. It's the revenue sources that are legally able to be collected and then utilized. And we have more need than we have money. That is the challenge of this position in my two years. And I expect that challenge to not end and my, when I'm done and people will succeed me. So that is the difficulty in working with our electeds. Sheriff is in the room. I know others are on Zoom. We are here to give you the best support we can within what we have to work with. And that's always been the challenge, is to, to figure out in that puzzle of the available monies, what piece goes where. And that puzzle changes every year. We have new dynamics. We have new, uh, we have new pressures from above at many levels, not only the federal but state level, on demands for service without any funding to go with that. That never ends. So again, the puzzle is how do we fit what we need to do in the, in the responsibility to our citizens? And then how do we have that, uh, frankly appropriated into those needs? And, and that, I think, is, is, is the issue. We have many more things to do, but at that, I think basically, you know, look at this as a, as a journey. It, it, uh, you didn't get here overnight. We, we won't be done overnight, but we will learn hopefully each day. We are purposely, ladies and gentlemen, uh, noticing our, our attendance to be much more prevalent in the building, this building, Monday through Thursday. Because I am an old-school guy that believes you need to be here to see what goes on and you need to learn from the experiences of interacting with all of our people, our citizens, our department heads, certainly our fellow elected officials and, uh, and people that are interested to learn. Because I've learned a lot over my many, many years of service, but I always learn more and I look forward each day to learning more. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Whistle. Commissioner Gimmer, your comments about two thousand and twenty-five.
All right, thank you very much. Um, so, you know, I want to tell you guys right now that, first off, I really appreciate, uh, the citizens of Park County, the ones that have, have voted and elected and put me in this position. Um, I want to tell you that, uh, that, you know, when it comes to the goals of Park County, I think the goals are very broad-based and can be placed that way. But me being new and trying to understand what all is entailed and how exactly this is going to play out for me, I will tell you that some of the things I've seen that I really, really want to make, uh, sure that we all grasp is the communication ability, communicating out to, to our, to our citizens in Park County, communicating with those involved, the elected officials as well as all the department heads, uh, getting myself out there and really, uh, walking with you guys and seeing what's going on. That is, uh, very important to me. I believe that will also institute in the, in the fiduciary responsibilities of this position. So I believe that that communication really needs to be opened up. And I would, you know, would love to, uh, to take time and sit down and talk with every one of you, especially those in the, in the elected positions as well as the department heads. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gimmer. Um, and I'm, I'm just looking at this as a, a real broad, um, brush stroke that, you know, New Years are great because every new year we get a chance to draw the line, um, kind of put, put the last year, throw it in the trash or just store it on a shelf and learn from it and draw the line and refocus and start anew. Um, and, uh, my goal for county government is that we all work as a team and that we support each other, we are useful to each other, that we have respect for each other and that we, um, all do the best job we can to serve the people of Park County because that is ultimately our job, is to serve the people who live here. Um, and so I, I just think it's nice to be able to kind of have that visual of drawing the line, stepping over it and say, we've got a new, a fresh start and we're gonna, um, we're gonna go at this and give it everything we got. It's a new day. So I just wanted to put out, out there, I, I will speak for my other two commissioners, we are absolutely available. Um, we are open for conversation. Um, we are here to serve and, um, really looking forward to it for the next four years. So I think at that, um, goals for the year will develop as things come up and as, uh, tasks come up that we need to take care of. And so we're excited to, at least I'm excited to, to be here to help facilitate anything that we can. Any other comments about that? We'll go on to the next item, which is every year we do elect a chair for the Board of County Commissioners. Um, I have served for two terms, just to give some, for two years, to give some context. Many counties rotate the seat, um, every year or every two years. Um, and every county gets to make it up as we go. Um, the way we've been doing it is every year, we're drawing the line and we're starting afresh and we get to, um, figure out who wants to, who wants to take this seat for the next year for two thousand and twenty-five. Comments? Mr. Whistle.
Madam Chair, I want to thank you for stepping into the breach, if you will, for this two-year period. Um, having been in this arena of Park County Government for several years and seeing the evolution of commissioners. Commissioner Gimmer, you are the thirty-fifth commissioner I have served with in my forty years as an elected official in this county. Commissioner Mitchell is Commissioner thirty-four. Commissioner Elsner was Commissioner thirty-three. So I have this iconic sense of numbers, kind of an occupational hazard. Um, and, uh, with that, I have, uh, I have appreciated the fact that you have stepped up in two years that were not the easiest years that we could have gone through. And you led us through those good times and those bad times. And I want to thank you for that because, um, I think you were the right person in the right place at the right time. And I think you have carried the brunt of that responsibility and that leadership. So in light of that, I would like to volunteer my services to try my hand at chair, um, for this next year and see what I can do to, to continue that leadership you've provided and to take us down that new year. So I would volunteer if there's any interest to, to go with that.
Mr. Gimmer, comments?
So I really appreciate what I have been, um, able to reach out in, in such a short time and have this discussion within the county. Uh, as far as chair, uh, Commissioner Whistle, i- in that position, how do you feel about, um, pushing forward and, and possibly implementing more of a time limit sets as chair for open discussions?
We've just traditionally looked at it year by year. You know, so we, we were on a two-year track that I think served our needs with Commissioner Mitchell as chair. And the circumstances lent her skills and her personality to being successful as a board. And I think for the most part, we were. And basically, we take it one year at a time. And, uh, that's the only way I look at this, is it's, it's a one-year gig and to see what I can do to, to help us lead, to cor- collaborate with our fellow peers and our appointed officials and our workers and make sure that we are moving Park County forward in the right direction.
Um, and, um, I am happy to, to serve at the will of my fellow commissioners. Um, it has been an honor to chair. Um, it's extra work, um, but it, it, I did it gladly and happily. So if, um, um, Dave, do you consider yourself, you nominated yourself?
I would do that. I would nominate myself for chair.
That, that is a proper motion. Just to let you know.
Can I ask you another question, Dave?
Sure.
So, um, sitting as chair, had you been, uh, nominated or elected as chair, how do you feel about, um, running the, the, the meeting uh, as far as responses and allowing the, the, the open public? Do you feel that, that, that is their freedom of speech time and they really should be allowed to, to discuss what they need to discuss during that time?
I don't foresee any structural changes in what we've established over the last two years because public comment is one of the best inputs we get from folks and it gives them the opportunity to express their free speech rights, um, in the time slot, time slot and time allotment. I would like to see us look at actual timing devices and so that we know what the time limits are so people are not guessing. And there's some things we can do mechanically that aren't too expensive to help facilitate a timely and orderly process of our meetings. And I think there are just some small things. And then depending upon the new executive leadership, we'll work with those in order to accomplish some of those kinds of things.
I also, uh, just want to make mention that I really appreciate Amy, Commissioner Amy Mitchell and her decorum and her ability to really, um, try to keep the peace in some of these really wild meetings. Um, I do, I do really appreciate seeing that happen. That being said, I believe that I would second the motion for Commissioner Whistle.
Hey, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. You want to take over now or do you want to take over next week?
I'll take over next week. You're doing a good job. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the honor or the responsibility of the rest of this meeting.
All right, I will, I will, uh, have my last, my last thing here. And, uh, and I, I, I'm looking forward to still coming as prepared as always to the meetings, but to not have that layer of responsibility. And we may want to discuss if I still run Zoom since I'm digital and you're a little bit more analog. And, um, I've kind of got it down, but not having to, to be quite as focused on the agenda and stuff, it'll be easier to just help run Zoom. So that is acceptable for us to, to team-tag that, right? Um, and it might take a little bit of the pressure off the chair.
Amen, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So, see, we can, we can come to win-win decisions here. Excellent. Um, let's see. Next item is a meeting schedule for work session and B O C C. Um, we have in the last, um, four years had Tuesday, the second Tuesday off as a board um, because Commissioner Elsner attended the South Platte Water Roundtable. Um, and he liked to attend in person. It was in Longmont and it starts at four o'clock in Longmont on the second Tuesday. Um, and so out of consideration for his desire to attend those meetings in person... um, we, we did not have a meeting on the second Tuesday. Um, it's a new day and, um, we'll figure out who is going to serve on, um, the South Platte Water Roundtable because it is an important, um, position. But we don't have to keep that schedule if we decide that it's not necessary. Um, my thought was, is if, if, first of all, I'm gonna just throw in another item. Is it important to always be at the roundtable in person? Um, driving up to Longmont, how much? I, I should have looked at how long it takes to get to Longmont from here.
From here it'd be roughly around two hours.
About two hours? So if we, if our meeting ended at, um, one-thirty, which usually does, I mean, our meetings unless we've got a big land use case, they don't go really long. Um, that whoever was serves on that, if they wanted to go in person, they could still make it. So what do you think?
Yeah, but there was a reason that we, we took that second Tuesday off was the roundtable meetings. Um, I would like to be, just consider trying the first, second and third Tuesdays. Tuesdays seem to be a better meeting day. The fourth week is generally when we have Colorado counties. Uh, we gather once a month in that last week to have our steering committees, which is our version of legislative committees. Um, we have multiple of them because we deal with multiple things. And that frees that up. Um, and the only thing, uh, we say that is that, um, I saw the vice chair position and thankfully didn't get one last year. So I didn't wise up, so I tried for another vice chair position and I'll see at the end of the month whether I get that one. Commissioner, uh, Mitchell has also put her hat in the ring for a vice chair position on a different committee. So basically, um, what I've learned in the CCI, um, realm, we are lost without them as an organization. All but one county, I believe now is a member of CCI. Um, Brumfield and Boulder joined us. That's an interesting experience um, with their elected representatives. But what the, the thing about CCI is that we all work, there's very little labels on anybody. We work together very well. It's really the good of the order and, and what's happened at CCI is local government has been under attack by the state government in many, many forms, in many different avenues, in many different, um, arenas. And the best thing we have going for us as rural counties, there's more smaller counties than there are bigger counties, is the fact that we have to stand together because it's one county, one vote. So we have equal representation when it comes down to policy decisions. And we need to be informed to be effective. And, uh, the great thing about vice chair, you're supporting the chairman who does most of the heavy lifting, but it's still a responsibility. So I have to do a little expertise in tax and finance. So I'm, I'm looking at that, so. Tax and finance, can you hear that? I, I'm sorry, we're not, we're just not communicating to the back row.
Commissioner Gemmer.
So I believe that the, uh, from my understanding, we're looking at, uh, performing meetings on the first, second and third Tuesdays. Um, I don't see any, any issues with that. I believe that would, that would benefit the county.
And, and I, I concur. I think that would be a great schedule. It's easy. One, two, three. They don't have to worry about skipping the second. Um, we, we can always call special meetings if we have more work to do, which we're happy to do. We've had a lot of special meetings, um, last fall, like working on the budget and getting, uh, meeting the deadlines that come up with, um, getting the budget, uh, steps approved. So, uh, I say, um, I am, I agree.
Senator, uh, Michelle, so, um, one thing to consider is how would you want to handle months in which there's a fifth week? Because then that would create, you know, a pretty big gap between meeting times of, you know, two weeks without a meeting. So I don't know what to think about.
Well, I think there's four fifth Tuesdays in the year. So four, four times i- in the year, we'd have two weeks. Um, that might be, give me, give me a time to actually really take a vacation, which I haven't done in four years.
So I suppose, I suppose it could be sort of a, um, case by case as, as it comes up, if something needs, we could look at.
Yeah, if we needed a special, uh, meeting on the fourth or fifth Tuesday, by all means, we can, we can make that arrangement. Um, it's just because there hap- you know, the fifth, I think it was April, July, September and December. I think something like that. I don't know, but, um, we can. Any other comment? We can figure that out as we go with the work at hand.
I don't know if you're in front of me, but is there, are there five, I don't think there are five Tuesday's.
There's not.
No. Okay, we're good then. Okay, see you.
All right, so you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that, um, we would meet the first, second and third Tuesdays of each month as our formal meeting days.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item is, um, like to notice the Land and Water Trust Fund meetings, um, that they are, um, in case two commissioners want to be at that meeting, that we notice that as, um, a, a potential B O C C meeting because if two or more commissioners are at a meeting, um, we need to notice it. Just because, um, I like to attend those because I glean more information out of the cases when I hear the presentation from the presenter and, um, Commissioner Gemmer may want to attend them just to absorb what, what they do and how it works and you learn so much. Um, and so I thought, is that okay? I thought that would be a good thing to just, to put out. Exactly. Because then we can all participate if we, if it works within our schedule and, um, so excellent. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would really encourage Commissioner Gemmer to attend, especially currently the, the first year and forward and get, get your own benefit, um, check on it. But the Land and Water Trust Fund is unique to Park County. No one else has something like this device, uh, or the funding device either. And it's really, really enlightening to see the different projects that come and get it, get kind of acquainted to the history of, of what happened with this fund originally. It was designed to fight Aurora in the South Park Conjunctive Use Program, but a lot of thought was put into it for when the fight was over, what happens next. So that's why a lot of the different programs are what they are. And then of course, those uses were expanded in twenty eighteen with voter approval and it will come up again for reauthorization in twenty twenty-eight. So within your terms, potentially you will be able to deal with a reauthorization or something to do with this fund.
Now, I appreciate your encouragement for that and that is something that I do have every intention of being involved in. Uh, you know, I'm been slightly involved with water and water law and some of the issues, uh, with my, my past history. And so I do definitely want to be involved in that meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Um, next area, um, is we've got a new board and we all bring certain knowledge and expertise to our seats and we would like to be a communication conduit between just our knowledge, the county manager and departments. And we thought it might be helpful, um, if, if we kind of decide where our areas of knowledge and expertise lie, um, and we could kind of be that point person of maybe more information because of our past work experience through the county manager to departments because it's hard for us to, to, you know, know everything and, um, we of course are not going to intercede ourselves in between into the departments because we've got department directors and elected officials and that's their job. But if we kind of do that, we would have a little bit more ability to maybe be useful. Um, with Jason's water background and construction background, um, we're fortunate and it's nice to have, um, that experience, work, real world work experience, um, brought to the table. And so if Jason's kind of that, that connect with the county manager on those areas, maybe he could help through his knowledge with the county manager, um, just help be a bridge. And if, like I brought up, if there's legislation possibly in the clerk's office that I know that their organization, um, Colorado County's Clerks Association work on, but if there's something that has nexus with that to what CCI is doing, whoever is that communication conduit could, could bring up maybe some of those issues saying, you know, we're going to speak on behalf of our clerk through CCI to help press something or try to help stop something that is, um, could be detrimental. So we just thought it might be easier because if we can kind of divide and be useful, um, it allows us to, to do what we're best at and where our interests lie. There's no reason for us to, to, to focus on everything because then you don't do any of it well. So comments? That's, that's where that agenda item came from.
Yeah, we have certain areas that we work within and, and you've listed one of them and I, if I can just take the ball and run with it a little bit, health and human services. One of our twenty-one funds that we control in Park County is the Health and Human Service Fund. And they are basically funded by state and federal government money. It's on a share basis between eighty-twenty and ninety-ten. And our contribution is limited. We do have a slight mill levy that contributes to the public welfare, social welfare, I forget exactly why it's listed in the tax rule, but there is a small component of that. And Susie Walton and her crew are absolutely angels and diamonds for what they deal with across this big county. All of the people that they interact with are in some kind of difficulty in some way, shape or form, whether it's self-imposed or imposed upon them. And so they're fortunately well-funded to the degree of the impact. And that doesn't mean that we're flush with money, but we haven't had to come and take general fund money and put it into the HHS funding. They have been very judicious in the administration of that. And when we get those folks in here, Commissioner Gemmer, you will begin to understand the, the complexity and the, the absolute wide scope that these folks deal with. They have our veteran service officers, for example, under that program or in those programs. We do a fabulous job with our veterans, even with the limitation of, of the two people we have in this county and other counties. And so those are the kinds of things that, that is specific to them and they have the money funding to do so, but they keep us informed of their process and their progress. So that's one of them.
So.
So we, we typically to work directly with the county manager and, and Ms. Walton. But there's, it's always good to know because she co-exists with our conferences with CCI, they, uh, county, um, social service directors meet concurrently. So we get a lot of our information directly from those individuals from a state level as well as our local level. And she's an excellent resource for us and, and a very, very good leader.
So I mean, do you think this will be useful? Do we want to just continue status quo? I just thought I'd brought it up for conversation since we, this is our chance to talk to each other. Um,
So, you know, I, I believe that this is absolutely one of the areas I think I was looking at and especially during the campaigning time was what this county could really utilize. I would, I would love to, to step my way into and, and helping out with, uh, you know, the, the, the building services as that has been my background as well as possibly even Pub Works. I have, uh, I have loved, um, working for Denver Water for the years that I did. I've seen that municipality and how it operates. Um, and not saying that it, it, it can change anything here, but I would love to really have that discussion and, and talk with, with th- those, those department heads, section heads and, um, you know, see what, where those, where those deficiencies are, what they really are trying, and, and have that direct line of communication or conduit back, back through to us.
Well, and I think the way we normally, you know, operate is, um, you know, we are, we, the departments are run by our county manager. But we are here for our, I mean, you can definitely lend good in- information and experience, um, through what your work history has been, you know, and so, um, we don't want to insert, insert ourselves into the departments, but we want to be useful and use our information and knowledge to be able to help that. So, um, of course, once we have a county manager seated, we will work out a lot of the details on, on their style and how they envision um, our communication and our usefulness. I just thought that we should have a, a conversation about it now since we can. So.
I would just add this, Madam Chair, that, uh, I think, uh, those are certainly on point because we have a lot of activity going on development services. You know, the, the land use regs, the update of the master plan and S T R rewrite, not to mention our current efforts and increased efforts for code enforcement. And those are going to be some insight that I think you can lend, uh, as, as a new fresh set of eyes, Commissioner, uh, Gemmer, uh, to, uh, to assist them with, um, real world views. I think Pub Works, we have a rock star in Nick. We appreciate Nick, um, very much and everything you've done. I can tell you this. I have had contacts with folks over the last week of wind. And Nick's people have been very responsive and I give them kudos and the people who contacted me and I contacted him and they had their problems addressed. So I know Pub Works is doing the best they can in hurricane season winds. And it's just rearranging the snow. It's too cold to melt, so it's just rearranging where it sits. So Pub Works is, is got some good leadership and some good people, but we can always look at different points of view and I think that's, that's definitely worked worth, um, your, um, investment in, in, uh, getting to know them well. Cause we have some, we have some really good people.
Absolutely.
And, um, there's just a, a couple other areas. Um, there is, um, emergency, uh, E S Council, um, they meet second Wednesday? I think second Wednesday. I'd have to pull up my calendar and look. And, um, normally one commissioner goes to that, um, just to, um, to be eyes and if there's something that we need to help them with, you know, we, we're there just to, again, our goal is to be useful and helpful. Um, so wherever that, that interest lies, um, that's one thing that we might want to figure out because we don't want to have to notice every meeting that everybody has that all of us will be there, but, um, we could also if there was something, but, um, that, that's one. And then there's, um, RETAC, which is, it's actually um, Central Mountain Regional Emergency Trauma Advisory Council. And I've been sitting on that, but you know, that's pretty much way over my head. It's all trauma, ambulance and all this stuff and, um, our ambulance districts participate in that. Um, we normally have somebody appointed to it. Um, I've been to a couple of meetings, but, uh, I really, they've got, they've got it so handled. There was nothing I could help them with. So, um, but that's another one that guys can think about and see who wants to, to fill that slot. Um, and I think that's about it for at least those, um, different meetings that come up on a monthly basis. So we'll go, so that's, that's county and kind of offshoots of county stuff. And I hope that makes sense to everyone.
Let me add, add one that, that we have CUSP too. CUSP is one of those, uh, commissioner duties that we have a seat on and I'm currently that. But that's water related, um, actually lots of different things related. But fire mitigation certainly is a part of that and fire prevention. And so CUSP is, is another one of those, uh, items that you can put down on the, on the list. Um, yeah, that was the only other thing I thought of.
All right, so we could think about how, and, and we'll have to, um, I'll pull, try to pull all those times and dates, um, from my calendar, give them to Cindy for her to share with you guys. So we can, you know, they got to mesh with other things that we're doing on our schedule with other meetings that we have to see what will work and what will fit in to the schedule we have because we've got lots of Zoom, lots of Zoom meetings. Um, so the next area is Colorado Counties Inc., which is CCI. And, um, I am right now the designated voter for Park County for the legislative issue. So what we do is, and a lot of this is for, for Commissioner Gemmer's, um, information. We, we have focused legislation that we, um, the county commissioners bring to CCI, we voted on them and their special legislation that we work on through CCI. Um, and then we have all these bills that come up that we filter through that can have a positive or a negative impact on counties and our, our budget funding or unfunded mandates, whatever it is. And so we have a bunch of And so we have a bunch of bills that we look at, um, and we will normally discuss those. The meeting before our, our CCI legislative meeting, which is a two-day meeting. And, um, we decide how we want to vote on those. And then I take our votes to that meeting, um, and we can all zoom into those meetings. I normally go in person as the voter. Um, it's just better communication to be in person. And then we vote on that if we support it, um, we want to support the, the legislation. We want to amend it, we want to, um, oppose it or whatever. Um, and so, uh, but there's also steering committees within CCI. Uh, and it is, I'll just read them. Agriculture, Public Lands, General Government, Land Use and Natural Resources, Health and Human Services, Justice and Public Safety, Tax and Finance, Tourism and Economic Development, and then Transportation and Telecom. Uh, and so a lot of times they'll have steering committee meetings, like for agriculture, every month, Colorado Department of Agriculture Commissioner Kate Greenberg has a Zoom call with us. Um, and I participate because I learn a lot that I can share, um, uh, with Colorado, um, Central Colorado Catamarans Association and other ag workers on maybe grants that are coming up that they could apply for or other information about wolves, wolves coming in or whatever. And, um, and so we can kind of figure out, we can all participate on those. But, uh, just wanted to bring that to your information on that. And you're going to be at CCI for the next couple of days, starting tomorrow, right?
Absolutely. Yes, I'll be there for next couple of days from Wednesday through Friday. I will learn a lot more about that as I have going to the winter conference that I went to. Uh, that's a whole new, uh, eye-opening experience of, of government that I, I was not fully involved with, that I'm, I'm really going to be happy to look at.
Excellent. So, um, so I just wanted to, to have that conversation. Mr. Whistle, you have any other comments?
No, we, we rely heavily on the teamwork of CCI and the people that we've, uh, basically nowadays we're contracting with a lot of our, our representatives. Um, a guy from my past is been hired by CCI, a guy by the name of Pat Boyle. And he, um, and I go back to the mid eighties when he used to work for a group called Casey, Colorado Association of Commerce and Industry, was the State Chamber of Commerce on property tax issues. And he retired when he was representing the Assessors Association somewhere around 2015. And all of a sudden, at our winter conference, we saw his name. So I was talking to one of our people called Dylan Pepper, and he's worked for the Clerks Association too. He, um, said, well, apparently his house in Hawaii became too expensive, so he needed to come back and, and earn some money. So he's a longtime friend who's going to be there and hopefully, regardless of how the thing comes out for a chairmanship or vice chair, it's going to take a lot of us and our expertise. And that's really what I've, I've found that's the good side, the upside. We've gone through some changes at CCI, Commissioner Gemmer, from where it was even two years ago. Uh, but there, with that change again comes opportunity. And the relationships you make are basically what drives the organization. And you got a beginning of that at, at our winter conference. There were some outgoing there too. So you'll have your freshmen that you'll meet and, and you'll refer those relationships. I have freshmen, um, a former clerk from Yuray County, and I bonded immediately at orientation and we're still buds now. So those are the relationships that, that'll make a difference to you.
Right, and, and just one other comment, we don't need to labor this. You know, you get to know your fellow commissioners and there's other counties that, that have a lot more staff, a lot more budget, a lot more money. They have many attorneys, um, and they, they write, um, resolutions and do research. Um, they have people that actually look into a lot of bills on legalities and such. We share information and they will lend their expertise on their, um, uh, lots of staff to help us as Park County. So you get to know them and it's really, it's really an awesome teamwork. Um, and appreciate all the commissioners that we work with. It's, it's really helpful to little Park County, big little Park County. Is that pretty good? All right, next one is the South Platte and Arkansas Basin Water Roundtables. And who wants to participate in those meetings? Because, um, as the chair, I will, since you'll be chair starting next Tuesday, I'll write the letters to those two roundtables saying who is going to be the designated Park County representative for that roundtable, so.
And I'm sure I've been thinking about this and I would like to recommend Commissioner Gemmer take the South Platte Roundtable. Um, he has a good, good background in, in, uh, his time at Denver Water. He also understands that CU does not stand for the Colorado University Football Team. It's Consumptive Use. And that's a key, that's a, that's a leg up right there. Um, I'm already on two roundtables. I don't really need to do three. And, um, I sit on the Metro Roundtable with the Upper South Platte. So that allows me to be connected. It's a offshoot of the South Platte, but just for the metro area. But, and then I'm also on the Arkansas because I have a longstanding interest being a native of the lower, 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 upper Arkansas to be involved in what that is in that portion of Park County. So consider that.
So under that consideration, and I do appreciate you, uh, putting that desire out there. I will tell you that I, I believe that, that South Platte Roundtable is something that I can absolutely step into. Um, it is something that has been in my wheelhouse, um, operating within the South Platte District, uh, for Denver Water and understanding how that, the, the ramifications of that, that system does work. So I will definitely be involved in that.
So Jason.
Are you guys are okay with this?
No, um, I, I vote yes. I mean, we don't have to make a formal motion, but Jason, Jason's willing to serve. And I think you would be great in that capacity, especially with your experience in water. Um, and I think that, that, you know, Dave, you understand the, the, the Arkansas Basin. Um, and, um, and it's, it's very interesting. I served on Arkansas Basin for a while and it was, I learned so much. Um, and so I think that we've got a good, um, good cross-section of guys serving on those. So thank you. And, um, I will get those letters out to those two to let them know who will be usually zooming into those meetings, but you can also attend in person.
And I will, I will say that I do plan on attending a few in person just so that I can, uh, face recognition, shake hands.
Always good. And the Arkansas one is in Pueblo.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you our off weeks when we had that second week off. Tuesday was the roundtable for the, uh, South Platte. Wednesday is my Arkansas Roundtable. Thursday is the Metro Roundtable. So I, I can, I think two is enough in one week. Um, so yeah, and I, I've been doing them by Zoom mostly just because of the distance. Yeah, so yeah, Metro's in Denver, Arkansas is in Pueblo and the South Platte's usually in the southwest corner of Weld.
Excellent. All right, we are making progress. Next item is, um, Pike's Peak Area Council of Government. Um, Commissioner Elsner served, um, on the board, um, for them for, I think, the last four years or until he took the place from, uh, Commissioner Dall- Dolby. Um, so that is vacant. Just for context, I have served on the, um, Pike's Peak Area, um, Commission on Aging for the last three and a half years, um, helping them stand that up. They, they took it under PPACG from the City of Colorado Springs was running it. They brought it under the PPACG umbrella because PPACG is El Paso County, Teller County and Park County. So we focus on, on the Commission on Aging, how to help seniors age in place, um, working on legislation on, um, triple a- a- area agency on aging funding, uh, and, um, just how PPACG provides funding to Park County for senior coalition, um, and to help our seniors. So, um, I kind of know everybody at, at PPACG and by default, I live the closest to Colorado Springs. So, um, I will step up and fill that slot if you guys want. If somebody else wants that, let's have a conversation, please.
I agree.
And I, I accept. And I guess as the chair, I will notify Andy, who is the in, the chair at, um, in charge at PPACG, that I will be filling that slot. So thank you for your confidence in me to serve in that position. There's other opportunities, uh, opioid council, which Mr. Whistle is serving on right now. Want to talk about that one first?
Yeah, let me talk about, I'm, I'm the BOSO guy. Uh, when I heard BOSO the first time, I'm going, okay, we're, we're government acronyms. What does that stand for? Behavioral Health Service Organizations. So it's tied to the opioid settlement that Colorado negotiated with the manufacturers. And we get money into a region, we're Region 15, which I think coincides with our judicial district. And so what happens into this money that's distributed, it goes into education in communities of size. So frankly, out of the four counties in our judicial system, it ends up in Salida and Canyon City trying to deter the use of illegal substances. There are other mental health services, but they're limited in scope and availability. And one of the biggest problems we face in this rural region, regardless of these efforts, we do cooperate and have agreements with other neighboring agencies and organizations to expand the availability of mental health services, which is in short supply. But that is part of the BOSO organization. And fortunately, our human services people are involved with that too. And they help guide me when my feeble brain goes, what is that about? And they help me understand that. But I'm, I've been taking that on and it's, it's really just been again, part of this journey of, of enlightenment and experiences. So I'm, I'll, I'll continue.
Thank you. All right, good answer. Um, next one is Upper Arkansas Advisory Council. Um, I think Commissioner Elsner filled that spot. I think I might've attended a meeting or two. I think it clashed with something else that I, I was attending. But, um, you want to think about that, do a little bit of research? We could send you some information on it, um, to let you know what it's about. It's more economic, um, economic development. Um, and it's kind of weird because we're Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, but in some, some areas, we're up to the Upper Arkansas Council of Governments. So we're kind of fractured with what we participate with in some of these different, um, boards. So, Mr. Whistle?
Yes, ma'am, just to re- reclaim some memory. Yeah, we have the Small Business Development people that will work with the Upper Arkansas Council of Governments and some small business loan revolving loan programs that go through them. That's a separation from where we deal with Pike's Peak exclusively. If we get into 1041 things, we deal with the Northwest Council of Governments, generally speaking. And those are potential if we have reservoir projects come before us for a 1041 permit. So we have other needs that we have cooperative agreements, not just with Pike's Peak, but Pike's Peak handles the majority of it.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll get some more information and look at our calendars and see what, how they all mesh together. Um, next item, and I just brought this up because the plant, Transportation Planning Region, Nick is currently serving, uh, on that. And, um, I think Commissioner Elsner served on it before. And just wanted to have a conversation about it. It's, it's sometimes filled by a commissioner or it's whoever we think is best for the county to be the representative on that.
I was glad Nick volunteered, or did we push you? I'm not exactly sure. I'm not sure I remember what that conversation was, sir. Uh, I think when we were talking, I was, I'll give you this anecdotal, we were at the open house at the CDOT houses. And I got to meet a lot of the people from CDOT who are on the TPR. And that was one of the questions about who was going to take Nick's place. And I said, you were. And they thought that was a good move. So that was anecdotal, uh, from people who work, um, in that arena and have met you. So I think if you're willing to serve, it makes a lot of sense to me to have you there because of your expertise and you know more than we do, uh, will ever know. So I'm, I'm good if you're good. He said, he said he was good.
Excellent, glad to hear that. No, we, we believe in staffing with the, the best person who can be the most helpful to Park County. And I think you are that guy, Nick. So thank you, we're grateful.
Absolutely, and I, uh, I appreciate you stepping up for that position because that is, uh, it's very important.
Yeah, you get the chance to advocate for projects that we need in Park County through that planning. Um, and, uh, we need all the help we can get. So thank you. All right, that takes care of that item. Let's see, contract review, signing authority, um, I guess we need to look at the old resolution. I just wanted to bring this up to float it up to see, um, we might need to put this on another meeting agenda to be able to. And Cindy, you'd like to comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, just as a reminder, I, that, that it's a lot of, so I just want to let you. Um, but I, I, what I'd like to, I think it's important to. And I think that, you know, I think it's important that we bring as many contracts as possible. You know, with some authority that maybe for smaller. But I mean, I think our plan is to bring them to, review them, do inside them. And then in certain situations, you know, if appropriate.
So, um, so possibly looking at the review, the, the current resolution that's in force. So we'll put it on a, a work session in another agenda and for a future meeting. And we, you know, because it's good, we're reviewing all policies right now. And so it's always good to, to, you know, look at.
And this would dovetail into qualifications.
Okay.
In, in terms of. But it is a crossroad.
Excellent. Okay, so we will put that on the future meeting list. Mr. Whistle?
I think we're on the same page. We're just trying to get a handle on, on some of our contractual obligations. Because we, uh, in my experience, have been rather shielded from those. And we need to be aware of those and this is one way we can do that.
All good? Okay, um, let's see, so that will be for a future meeting. Um, next, uh, Aaron, um, you are up on, um, 11 deliberation on county manager position.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I'd like to point out with your deliberations on. Want to just give you, want to give you just some.
So Madam Chair and our, uh, commissioners, um, thank you for that. And I would like to give you two bits of information concerning your deliberations on county manager. The first is to give you some, um, direction on how to hold those, um, deliberations. Because of course, everything that has preceded your deliberations, uh, all of the interviews have been in executive session. So I want to give you some guidance on how you can hold deliberations without violating the state statute on, executive session confidences. And the second thing that I want to do is I want to, um, give you a suggested motion for the action that you're going to take once your deliberations are finished. So the first, because again, a state statute says and requires, um, everything that is, um, what is said in executive session is confidential. You cannot repeat what is said in an executive session. Um, so to the extent that you are deliberating about, um, the candidates and you, uh, are talking about your impressions and your general takeaways from what was said, that is something that you can do. And so I would steer you toward, um, you know, thinking carefully about, um, stating your opinions and having those opinions supported by your general impressions, uh, as opposed to so-and-so said such and such, so-and-so answered this question this way. So that would be something I would guide you, steer you away from. Um, if it becomes, um, an impediment to a robust, um, dis- deliberation on the part of the board, you always have the ability to have an executive session to go back and discuss a personal, um, personnel issue. So I just want to let you know that. Um, then the second thing would be, uh, the form of the motion. And that is when your deliberations are concluded, be that today or maybe be that at a later time. And the form of the motion would be. And the form of the motion would be to direct the assistant county manager to prepare terms of an offer to extend to such and such person for the board's review. So at the end of your deliberations, you are not appointing a county manager. You are not selecting a county manager. You are selecting a person to whom the assistant county manager would prepare terms of an offer for, and that person would, that offer would be extended to that person. Do you have any questions about that?
Thank you. Thank you, Erin. Appreciate your knowledge and information. All right. Who wants to start?
If I may.
Sure, Cindy, please.
I won't step out for this being a mistake, but I did distribute you the scoring summary from second round of interviews. And they're there for your review and and I'm going to step out for that call.
May I start?
Sure. Jason, or Commissioner Demmer, sorry. Well, I'll get that down. It'll flow off my tongue better. Well, off of Commissioner Whistle's tongue.
Working on that decorum is definitely going to be a fun, fun task for myself. So I want to start by saying, you know, through these interviews, I believe we had a lot of great candidates, at least two great candidates, that I believe both would actually function very well within our county. I believe they'll do, do a, do a great job. I want to start first by, by, if you may, by talking about Lucas Myers. Some of the things that I appreciated that I seen with him was his desire to be involved in the county, be with the county. His, his background of being able to work on budget items, I believe he's shown in both those aspects, the ability to work and function within the county as, as the manager. I believe that both of those, those issues are necessary in the county. But now moving on to Clarice Navarro. You know, some of the things that I've seen with Clarice was what she has to bring to this county. Where she's been in her past, she's really worked on some entities that can quite literally, I don't think we may ever see again bringing those type of values into this, working within the state and different entities. Working in the force departments, these are, these are items that I believe that she could bring into this county and really, really benefit this county with those as well. I believe that, that, that Clarice has shown the ability to communicate very well. And has, has the ability to, to be very charismatic in the mannerism in which she, she can manage. Some of the things that, that, that I appreciate about both these candidates is both of them, I believe, would, would function within our county well. I will tell you that I really do appreciate the candidates that did come up. And those are my points that I can, I can point out in a real quick, direct way and we can have a later discussion about those.
Mr. Whistle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having gone through this twice, it was really a learning experience. I think we've been working on this since about May of this past year. And, and just from my experience, not just the commissioner experience, but life experiences in being involved in, in private business as well as in government offices and hiring and firing people. This is, this experience I thought was, was really, really beneficial the second time around. Not that the first one wasn't, but I found the second way we did this with, with the panel that we had. And I want to thank and recognize the panelists that we had in assisting us. I had selected Commissioner-elect Gemmer at the time to be your representative to help in my deliberations and his deliberations because he was a part of this and needs to be in the front lines. Former Commissioner Walker is in our audience and she was Commissioner Mitchell's selection to help her and do the discussions and the interview questions. In the back of the room is Emmy Glancy West and she was the selection of former Commissioner Elsner. And then we had Cindy Garst in those interviews. So we went through two rounds. We had, I think, I believe 15 original candidates in this second effort. We narrowed that down to a final selection of three, of which one of those withdrew. The gentleman from Pennsylvania, Mr. Bish. So with that, I would concur that in a generic, non-specific sense, we have two very qualified candidates. We have ended the process with the selection of two people that I think, I have no doubt would be able to thrive in our environment and, and push us in a better direction. I believe they both have different skills. They have pluses and minuses in different areas and arenas. But I think our goal, and I've mentioned this through this process many times, our goal, the whole time that I've been involved, and I believe the rest have as well, is to try and select the best possible person. Whomever that is. And so we are down to that one or two, that binary choice. And I think, I believe that whomever we select, and I certainly have in my own mind who that would be, but I'm listening before we get to the vote, who that one person would be. And I think we will be well served by any one of those two. Thank you.
Thank you. And boy, I've done a lot of thinking on this and, you know, T squares, taking answers, scoring, you know, one point for who answered best, you know, and gone through many iterations on, on really filtering through. And it comes down to, in my mind, some of, they, they both have different areas of expertise. And, you know, we could turn them into one, it'd be like the dream, but they have great experience, both of them. And, and I'm sure their resumes and everything have been public information. And, and so it's, it's been really difficult because it comes down to what does Park County need? Where, where do we have deficiencies? Or where do we have leadership? Or where do we, where do we really need expertise? And I, you know, that's the thought process I've been using. And I think that's something that we should really think hard about is, you know, we know what our county government structure is and we're huge in landmass, small in budget. Staffed as well as we can be, not say really well staffed, but to the best of our ability with the budget. And so what do we need most? You know, that, that's the thought because county government is very different than any other government. Town, you know, town council, state legislature. You know, we're, we're unique critters. And it's really interesting in working with Colorado County's Inc. and the other commissioners. We all, we all serve our people to the best we can. And that's where we were focused. And so a lot of that comes down to where everybody's working the hardest. Some people, we may go about how to solve those problems differently, but that's where everyone is working towards. And so that is the thought process I've been using on trying to filter through this and say, what does Park County need the most? What is our? Where, where would we benefit the most from the experience that these two candidates have? And I've flip flopped back and forth a bunch because it's a tough decision.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, looking, looking at this from the long view, having been here when we didn't have this particular position. I'm looking at two former commissioners who had an administrative assistant who was not a county manager. So we have evolved over my lifetime in this organization to the model that we have now. And I think what I can say unequivocally and truthfully is that we need some gentrification in our organization. We need some new ideas and perspective. And that this opportunity will provide that. Because of that, I think there are always people who are reticent to change and frankly scared of change. And I can appreciate that. I'm an older dog now and I understand the want to not change very much. But I also understand that we have to grow and we have to learn and we have to embrace things we may not be comfortable with. That's where the appraisal profession allows me to, to learn and grow and still not be sued. You know, so you've learned from those experiences. You've learned from those life examples. And so with that, I think we're really down to the point of, of who do you think is an individual will be the best individual for this position? Because I have, I have looked at it. I'm occupational hazard. I have my own arrays that I created and I went through and I scored everything. And I can tell you in a generic sense that the scores were extraordinarily close. We got a compilation from Ms. Garst of all of us who participated in the final round. And the scores are very close. So I think that does illustrate the validity of both candidates. And it does reinforce the fact that whomever we select, we think will be able to do the job and do the job very well.
Mr. Gemmer?
Absolutely. So I absolutely agree with you. And you know, both of these candidates, in my opinion, showed a lot of value that I believe they, they could bring to this county. I will tell you this, during my CCI winter conference, I spoke with several county managers there. Actually, I focused on that, knowing that we have a manager position that was open and what, what, what duties were held with them. Out of the, out of the four different county managers I spoke with, they were all very different. And their management styles were very different. What they seen was more important than, than the other. You know, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna be straightforward and tell you right now that I believe that both these candidates will be, will, will function as county manager. My opinion of what I've seen out of them is one of the, one of the individuals I believe has the ability to bring stuff to this county that we have never seen before. In my opinion, I believe that, 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 that individual would probably be a big learning curve in a sense, but that ability to, to bring that and their experience to this county is something that I don't think we've actually seen before. And in my personal opinion, I really appreciated Clarice for that position in that mindset.
I don't disagree. I, I was enamored with Ms. Ms. Navarro. She, she has, as I mentioned in, in past times, she has that it factor as, as both of our candidates did. When I looked at it, I'll just throw the other, the other shoe out there that when I was looking at it, I, I, I scored Lucas Meyer a little bit higher in the generic sense of looking at the data that I did and the data that other people did, simply because he has continued to, to be in attendance and interested. And that to me says a lot because it really is going to also be a confidence factor. And who can best serve us sooner rather than later is it's a, it's a total package. And that's going to be a learning curve, as you said, and I don't disagree at all. And we're also going to have to give this person, whomever we select, the opportunity and support so that people can look at them as a human being and not just this figurehead. Because it's going to come down to the human interaction. We're in the people business. All of our people are here. And if we don't have our people, we don't get anything done. And if we don't have good people, we don't get anything done well. So it's, it's the team effort. It's our executive leadership point person. And so just the other side of the coin.
Yeah, I think a lot of it comes down to, to problem solving techniques or just how I go about dealing with issues and perspective. And holding my confidence in executive sessions. I I've said before from the dais that we, we might have to get to this job through the political process because that's how it works. But our goal is to not serve politically at all. We serve everyone in this county and we strive to make, at least I strive, and I think I'll speak for these two, to make the best decisions for the county and everybody who lives here. And, and I think that that is, that weighs on me. Because I think that one candidate has, has been involved in the political process so much that it's just nature. And I just it just causes me to pause a little bit. That's all I can say. So, because I know how divisive it can be and how it does not serve the people. We need to roll up our sleeves and take care of land, land use, policy, everything that helps serve everybody who their dream is to live here and live a good quality of life. So that's, that's what has been floating around in my head the most. So how do we, would we be better served if we had more discussion in an executive session? Are we, are we good with the conversation we're having just out in open? What do you guys think?
You know, in my opinion, I believe we are good with the conversation we're having out in open, to be honest with you. I am I'm not opposed to either candidate. And I'm just going to be straight up front with you. I'm just voicing my opinion of, of what I see could really benefit us in the future. Either candidate, I believe, would, would serve us very well and serve this county very well.
I think that's part of the difficulty is, is that, you know, if it's six of one, half dozen of the other, which one do you pick? Truly. I, I've really, I've, I've given it great consideration. I've, I've, I've really, since a week ago, been exercising every part of my feeble brain to try and come up with objective analysis. Giving people, and when I prepared my final review numbers, I looked at that and that was kind of, in my, in my professional life, I would come to a conclusion. So I came to a conclusion. And that conclusion is Mr. Meyer.
And sits at my feet, the the T square I did to analyze one point for the question answered that I believe gets to the nub of Park County and what we are and what we need. I also fell to the decision of Mr. Meyer. Because I believe that we, we have severe budget challenges. We have, we are unique. I mean, Park County is very unique compared to all the counties we're surrounded by. And we need a unique set of, of local understanding and of more looking internally instead of externally. And I guess that's where I really come down to that decision. And so that, and and so I guess the point is Chair, I don't
Madam Counsel? Proper protocol would be to move the motion you suggested?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like me to reread that?
It would be helpful for my feeble brain, yes.
I would suggest for
I would suggest for your motion the following, that motion to direct the Assistant County Manager to prepare terms of an offer to extend to Mr. Meyer for the board's review.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that motion as as stated by our county attorney for Mr. Meyer. And due to respect, Ms. Navarro, truly appreciate her. But in this decision of binary, yes or no, this is my, this is my choice and I'm comfortable with it.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and we will in a future review that offer. Thank you very much, Erin. We value you greatly. Next item is public comment. If anyone online or in the room would like to make a public comment, please either raise your hand or come up to the podium. All right, I see. Heather, I will ask you to unmute online if you'll. We're happy to hear from you. I will ask you to unmute, Heather.
Okay, thank you. It took a second.
Problem. Sometimes it's hard to find the hand.
I, yeah, it was disappearing. Anyway, good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to address a couple of things. One is, I would like to ask Dave, if you could please define the comment, we can be in disagreement, but that can be productive. I wondered if you could define that. And Amy, I remember when I met you, well, the only time I ever met you, even though you're my commissioner, in Guffey at Mike Smith's restaurant during the candidate forum, the Republican Candidate Forum for Commissioners. Jason, I met you also. At that meeting, we discussed an evacuation plan for fire, which seems apropos right now. And I'm kind of surprised in your meeting, you didn't reassure residents, talk about an evacuation plan. I think I heard the word once fire when you were talking about another organization. So I would like to know, is there a developed and executable evacuation plan in this county and for area specific evacuation plans? Or do we not have one? So since you're my commissioner, Amy, I'd like to hear from you on that. Thank you very much. I will mute now. And I will mute now and you can answer to everybody, okay? If that's fair.
Thank you for your your comment and your question. We we did have this conversation, and normally we do not have dialogue with public comment. We just want to hear from the public. But we did have dialogue about evacuation plans and stuff with our emergency manager. And they work with our fire districts on setting up evacuation plans. And it was, we can ping back to that, but I know that there are individual area evacuation plans. I would have to get ahold of Brad Golden, our emergency manager, to find out where those are posted. They could be on the fire district's website, I am not sure. But they do exist. And one other thing, we all know where we live the best. And it is up to us to have two ways out and to know, personally responsibility wise, you know, what is the best for us to do in case of an emergency, having to have had to evacuate multiple times from wildland fires myself. So we will, I'll ping Mr. Golden. And possibly we will send out some information on where those are. I know people are hypersensitive right now with the wildland fires that are going on in California. And we acknowledge that concern. And we will
Good job.
We will get that information out. So thank you very much. Kim, I see that your hand is up. I will ask you to unmute.
Yes, hello, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you for the meeting this morning and your swearing in. Thank you for the deliberation in public on the county manager. I am very supportive in the decision for Lucas Meyer. Something else, I just wanted to ask you guys whether you answer it now or come back at the next meeting or in a work session is just, I would like the sunshine law defined for the public. Because I'm a little confused by it, and I don't know if Erin can weigh in on this, or you guys can put communication out through your, through Emmy or Public Relations or or somewhere else, just so that we know, because the sunshine law is talked about a lot. And I'm, I've gotten different, you know, I I just think that there's a lot of confusion around it. So if you guys could clearly define it, so that when people see the three of you out at lunch, or they see the three of you at a Republican meeting, or that you're you're talking in the building, can you define for us what the sunshine law is and what it does to either restrict your conversations? Or what other conversations you can have, you know, via phone, email, all together? That would be great at some point if you could clarify that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, we're happy to, at a future work session, we will bring up, we will read the statute, let you know how it reads, let you know where those, where the requirements are that we may not. And we will read it from statute to let everybody completely understand. You know, we, and I think that that will add a lot of clearance, and then we will let our county attorney maybe expand on that if we need to. But the statute reads pretty clear on what we can and cannot do. We can talk to each other. I mean, I can find out how how Commissioner Gammert's family is doing. I mean, that's absolutely allowed. So we will, we will do that in a future session. So thank you very much for asking. I've got it on my to do list. Yeah, oh. Congratulations. All right, next hand up is Brandon Heacock. I will ask you to unmute.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Hey, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Obviously, for those of you that might recognize my name, I was part of the original six that was interviewed in the beginning for county manager, as well as the second time. And I can tell you that even as a competitor, I I 100% agree with your guys' decision. Mainly because as a competitor, yes, you know, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. But I I felt like the entire process was fair. And you guys asked very, very good questions. And I appreciated everyone, everyone's, you know, questions equally. I didn't feel like the process was unfair at any, at any, any point in in either of the processes. So I think you guys did a great job and just wanted to let the public know that.
Thank you for your comment. All right, no more hands up on Zoom. Anyone in the room?
Madam Chair, seeing no one, I would move to close public comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are, we do have an administrative session listed here, and it's only because a couple other items came came up that I would like to ask my fellow commissioners to be thinking about. The Central Colorado Cattlemen's Association in working with the whole wolf in the, they're just next door. And the stress level that is creeping up with depredation and calving season like two months away. They did receive a grant from Colorado Department of Agriculture to start planning and working on how we will prepare for the inevitable arrival of wolves. And one of the conversations they had with Colorado Department of Agriculture was carcass management. And I was asked the question, well, will our landfill take carcass? And it's like, well, we don't have one. We're trying to close one that's been closed forever. And so that's something that we need to think about, because that is way on the top of their list on managing carcass. And even, you know, like roadkill on the road, and how do you manage carcass away from areas where there is grazing? Grazing on private property, grazing on BLM, and grazing on national forest. And so that is something that please think about. And I will get more clarification from Kate Greenberg at our next, our meeting this month on what their thought is on carcass management. But it's something that we're going to need to start planning for whenever we get there. And it could be carcass that is depredated by a wolf or natural, I mean, you know, every once in a while cattle gets hit by a car, a vehicle on the road, or anything like that. So that's just something for you guys to please think about. Commissioner Whistle.
Since you brought that up, do, Jason, you may know, do we have any rendering plants operating in our area? Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, there there are no rendering plants in this area. There are facilities off of Highway 93 that render. That would be, in my mind, the closest, I believe. Used to be a plant that would render for usage of that in the past, but that has, I believe, is a statute issue in Colorado. That's something that I do not quite fully understand.
I don't either. But I I grew up as a kid.
Those rendering plants are no longer available, from my understanding, in Colorado anymore.
Like, when we were kids, growing up in in southeast Colorado, and it was agriculture ranching community and dry land wheat, had a lot of cows. When the cows died, they called Tribune Kansas, and the renderer would come over and pick it up and take it and dispose of it. That was how it was handled. We've gone into modern society away from those things. And so what what does happen with it? That's a really interesting question.
So so what does happen these days is landfill or personal property fill, as well as the other issues, if it has been euthanized. I believe that is, needs to be taken care of via fire. You cannot bury those on personal property. So but going to that, I was asked by a few community members, being as I own cattle myself, if I would attend that meeting on February 1. So I will be there as well.
Okay, oh, the Central Colorado Cattlemen's.
The CCA, yeah.
And I will make sure that you see the county lines information from CCI. So if you would like to zoom in on the Commissioner of Agriculture's Zoom meeting with CCI's Agriculture, it's so informative. We learn so much. And we can be helpful with the information that we learn. So I'll make sure that you get that information through CCI for those. And you'll probably get it tomorrow when you're at the, at your orientation for the next couple of days. At that point, that's the only other thing I wanted to bring up. So it was just came up pretty quick and engage your brains, please. I'd be grateful for whatever. We're going to have to figure this out. Hopefully, not this year. But you never know. Plan for the worst and pray for the best.
And I do want to explain why it is a big issue is if you have a carcass down that has been taken by an animal, it tends to bring a lot more of those animals onto that same piece of property. So it has to, they're trying to pull that off of the property and be taken care of in a different location so that they don't continue to deprive those those animals in those areas.
Yeah, in our perfect world, it would be and this is just perfect world. An area on either side of Kenosha, way high where there's no grazing. And dig a trench, because in the winter, dig a trench in the fall, because in the winter, I'm digging to dig anything. And if there is depredation, they go in the trench. And and then they could be covered, buried, and away from attracting to cattle. So but, you know, that will take some discussion, negotiation, and guidance. And to be determined. But we, we get lots of interesting challenges to work with. Just say that. Commissioner Whistle.
I think it was a year ago, we went to the CCA and there was Rancher Gettleman was there from North Park, Middle Park, I forget exactly which. He's the one who had his herd attacked. And he said, I think these are the great magic words from his experiences in North Park, because they had the original pair from Wyoming that were not captured in in the behest of the first dude here in Colorado. That's where the rules came from, is the petition initiative. So with that, they were dealing with those already, and it's a matter of when, not if. And so when you look at the map, and I think it's disingenuous, but I understand it, when they look at wolf travel, they do it by drainage basin. The Upper South Platte Drainage Basin is very large. So if a wolf had set foot in the upper basin, it would show a very large geographic area, but not that wouldn't be representative of necessarily where the wolf went. So when you look at those drainage areas in the CPW map, it's a large swath, but it's right next door. They're in Summit. Now, this new crop of Canadian wolves, they're looking at Rio Blanco, Picken, and Garfield. And what's going to happen when Snowmass and Aspen get wolves on the slopes in a couple of years? Yeah, so they're they're going, it's just a matter of time. And if we're looking at a population of 150 over a 10-year period, it will be inevitably across the state. And probably exporting into our neighbors. So it's a matter of planning for that. And it's disappointing that the community of ranchers asked for a pause to Parks and Wildlife to please, can we look at this objectively and get some, some ideas that we can implement in advance of them being turned loose? And that was denied at the commission, I think, last week.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. At this point, we are going to adjourn the meeting. So thank you, everybody. Everybody on Zoom, have a great afternoon. Enjoy the sun, even though it's cold, at least the sun is shining. And you guys have a great day. Oh, whoops.
I would second, I would second that.
All right, I jumped the gun. I was like, we're happy to end. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. You take care.
11:30 AM.